Good evening. Welcome to the planning board meeting of May 23, 2018. Rob will be out today, so I am filling in. And our members today, happy day, we have a brand-new member. Joanne Laut. And welcome.
Thank you.
I've been very patiently waiting for another female. And this is the day.
Bob, I think, was surrounded.
Harry Laquetelio-Bavas and our planner, John Cattell. I'm looking for a motion for minutes, April 45.
Madam Chairperson, Madam Chairperson, is that right? Did I say that right?
You could call me Tilly.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion, if you'll hear it, to approve the minutes of April 25, 2018.
Any second?
Second.
Very good. Any amendments?
Yes, there is one that I saw. And it would be on line number seven. It states that you were here, Tilly. And I think if you look at all the votes, you'll see that the motions are four to zero with one absent. And I believe that absence was yours.
That's right.
So that would be the one correction strike, the word "Tilly," words, Tilly Evangelista from the...
Members present.
You got it?
Thank you, Harry.
After that, I didn't really see any...
What page was that, Harry?
That's page one, line number seven.
Got it.
And after that, I didn't see anything other than that.
Ready to vote? Bob, you have any questions?
No, I'm good.
Okay, have a vote.
All those in favor?
All those in favor. I am abstaining because I wasn't present at the meeting. So...
Makes sense.
You too.
Me too, so I abstain too, I guess.
Yeah, two abstain and two supporting it, yes.
I'm glad that doesn't need a supermajority to pass.
We do, because we're present, we've got a quorum.
Cool, yeah, okay.
Okay?
Yes.
All right, we have some vouchers?
Andrea wanted me to explain that in accordance with the staple vouchers, all three are together, and that's how the finance director likes to process them, so they're not all broken out, even though all the invoices are included.
Okay.
Okay, Madam Chairperson, I move to approve the voucher for Staples Office Supplies, an amount of $91.82, $66.27, and $54.05 in our packets and as cited on this meeting's agenda.
Second, Madam Chairperson, for a total of $2,014.
We better go with Tilly.
$212.14.
$212.14? Is that what I said? I didn't say that right.
$2,000, didn't you?
Did I say $2,000?
Yeah.
$200, 12.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. The next one is BSC. Have a motion?
Madam Tilly, I move to approve the voucher for BSG Group de Varga Technical Review of Palmer Lane, $4,942 in our packets and is cited in the meeting's agenda.
Thank you. Second? No?
I'm recused from this, if you recall. This is Palmer Lane. I'm recused from the whole.
Okay, Chris...
Can I second?
Yes.
I second.
Any questions about it? John, did you have a comment?
No, the only comment I wanted to make is that, as you can see, it was a bill that was dated, but we just recently received it, so, yeah.
Sure we didn't pay it before, right?
No.
Okay.
Is there enough money in the M account to cover that?
There will be, or else. There's plenty in the surety account.
Can't use that.
No, you can't use that, but, you know.
Yeah.
They want to complete the project and continue selling houses and carrying on with their business, you know. We'll make sure.
We usually keep an ongoing balance.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
We do, but that issue will be resolved.
Yeah.
Just have to add more money to it.
Yeah, Chris, that's, or Joanne, calling you, Chris, see, I know your husband before Do you have any questions about this, Phil? Because this is the consultant that reviews the developments.
Gotcha, okay.
And BSC is for Palmer Lane. Are we ready to vote?
I'm ready.
All in favor?
He's not in his eye.
I'm ready to abstain.
Okay.
Nicely abstained.
One abstain, good. Ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So we've got three yeses, one abstain.
Please let the record show I'm abstaining from that.
And one absent.
And there's one more on top of page two.
I move to approve the voucher for reimbursement to administrative assistant for Adobe software upgrade for the purpose of file conversions from PDF formats to Microsoft Word formats in the amount of $23.88.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's like a well-oiled machine, you notice that? This is smooth.
All right.
For reference in the future, there's a program that's free, it's called Open Office, and...
It'll do that conversion.
Yeah.
Sounds good. We had a heck of a time doing it.
Did you?
Yeah, this, it was a stormwater, MS4.
Oh, yeah, the MS4s.
And all the previous copies are...
PDF.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Could not find a Word copy anywhere, so it did convert, you know, in its entirety, so that was, that was a good thing, saving a lot of time. So the two past years of which we did not submit reports will be finished on Monday in all likelihood and submitted.
Outstanding.
If I may ask, what's happening with this year's?
This year?
What's that, a whole new notice of intent?
Yeah.
Is my understanding?
And they're going to be due in October.
October.
We'll have plenty of time to fill that one out.
Now, does that have to go before the Conservation Commission? For the notice of intent?
Yeah, Conservation, P, you know, everybody's involved with water health.
The recommendations.
Everybody's got to add their data from the previous year, what's been going on, what's been permitted.
Each year it seems to be more in-depth. So it probably is more in-depth, two years.
Yeah, this is this phase two of the whole thing, and it is getting more involved, so...
MS4 is...
To have an interdepartment meeting, get everybody on board.
Absolutely. Don't do that by yourself.
I bet a lot of communities are probably working on it. They're probably all trying to get together on it.
MS4 is the municipal drainage. The federal government is requiring a plan be in place for each community.
Gotcha.
And they've been doing this for some...
A long time.
Yeah.
Ten, eleven years, twelve years.
And you got to, you're most surprised they're not giving us a penalty for not...
They might.
They might.
Still out.
They're getting tighter and tighter, stricter and stricter.
Yeah, I started looking into it, and of the 351 communities, only 34, you know, outstanding, so and so.
Yeah, yeah, they're after us. You keep on top of it, John. Okay.
Are you driving that process?
No, yeah.
Is that all right?
Yeah, we're going to get it done. Then we'll straighten it out later.
I see.
Like to see what our goals were for 2016, 17. See how onerous those goals were. I know we've hit a lot of, we hit a lot of bullet points, we did.
I mean, and a lot of it is redundant after you've been doing it year after year after year, so, I mean, the one good thing is that the town has a long history of getting that stormwater report in.
Yeah.
Getting it done, so...
The goals weren't that grandiose.
No.
Interesting.
You know, and everybody's been practicing best management practices with everything, so that's the most important thing. I mean, they even do that in New Hampshire.
Yeah, I think we've been hitting all the bulbs.
Their MS4 stuff is just coming into being this year, so...
Isn't Southern New Hampshire and us all sort of in one...
Well, Southern New Hampshire now is. You know, they're a phase two stormwater.
All right, next on our agenda is the correspondence. We've got something from the town of Raleigh.
Yep.
CBA, a special permit. Located at 77 railroad avenue. The Governor's Academy is doing something in Newbury.
Yeah.
And another one from Raleigh. The town hall, second floor, they have a meeting for a lot, multi-zoned, on Newbury Port Tempe hike.
I think they already held that meeting, it was on the 16th.
I guess they did.
Yeah.
Any other questions about it? Next on our agenda?
Can I just ask, do we ever get any notifications from Buxford?
Yeah.
We do?
Yeah, yeah, quite a few, actually.
Really?
Yeah.
Interesting.
Now, Tilly asked me a question about a development that is taking place in Buxford. We had a joint meeting with the Bicycle Path Committee last night, and there was a representative from Buxford there. And I asked her briefly about that, and she was aware of it, but we were running so late, into the night, so...
Yeah.
I did ask her if I could follow up with her, so I'm dropping that, I'll find out what the story is.
The one on the senior housing?
Yeah.
The Aqua follow-up, good.
Yeah, I never heard of a district for the elderly, labeled senior elderly district. I mean, it's almost with all this talk about, we've had lately about gender and whatnot, now we have an elderly district? You can't be under a certain age to live there? What is...
I think it'd be safe if it's everyone district, you know?
Absolutely.
It's where the old people go to die.
Where'd this come from?
We have a senior housing bylaw. We have a senior housing bylaw.
That's different, I mean, that's a building that's senior housing, so you can understand that.
Yeah, sure, but the whole district?
The whole district, I know. Sorry, you can't buy that house.
That's right.
You're not 55 or older?
People are always coming up with new ideas.
I doubt it'll be houses.
And if they pass muster, they get enacted.
Townhouses.
Okay.
It's a condo bylaw.
All right, we're moving along, so now we're on the town meeting.
On this staff report, you know, I threw this on the agenda as an item, we did want to review what took place last week, town meeting, everything did pass. That included the zoning ordinance for the so-called recreational marijuana bylaw. The town did vote in the acceptance as public ways, the three roadways associated with turning leaf lane subdivision. We did succeed in better defining continuous building area. It was a little contentious, but we got through it and got the two-thirds vote we needed. And then we have the open space residential development, which we spent a lot of time on last year, with a little confusion, that got through too.
Thank God.
Every...
That's fixed.
Yeah, yeah, really, and it did get the amendment passed also. And then the last one was mixed use, that was the allowing for residential units above the first-floor commercial. And surprisingly, that went through without really any discussion, and it's for the CB District exclusively.
Right.
So, in regard to that one, we'll probably have a project come in pretty soon for the CVS Plaza. They want to convert the second-floor commercial into residential. No expansion of the building, so it'd be all within the same footprint. But other than that, we did get through everything. All of the Form Sevens, I cited that in the staff report, everything's complete, delivered to Tom Clark, and she sent them off to the AG's office already, that was done yesterday, I believe, or the day before.
That's great.
Yeah.
So now the clock starts, 90 days?
Yeah, yeah, so, they do have the provision for an extension of 90 days if they need it, so, and that was spelled out with the email from Jonathan Eichmann, Attorney Eichmann. I just had that quick question that I cited in the staff report, and he came back with a paragraph of answers.
Oh.
So, that's on the first page of that report.
Yeah.
Did find a couple of typos. I'm sure you guys did too. Now, you know what, this staff report did have a little bit of confusion, you know, it started off with Article 23, and we were double paging, the printing, somehow or other, it was page three of the copy, came out on page two, if you caught that error. But this is, we'll start off, I guess, with Article 23, and that was the recreational marijuana bylaw. And the first page is fine. You get into the second page, and it's talking about the Styrofoam.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, so, and you slip down the page, and then you pick up Article 23 again, it's bold print marijuana, recreational marijuana, and then that staff report is copesthetic after that. But if you do see on the page number 13 of 38, in that staff report, just at the beginning, subsection B delineation, marijuana business overlay district is delineated, and it says "on shown the official zoning map," and that should read...
As shown.
Yeah, is delineated "as shown on the official zoning map." And then there was another one further in, distance in linear foot, that should be feet, so, that was the only, those were the only two editorials I had.
That's the bad, that's the worst we did.
Yeah.
That's pretty good.
I know.
I do have a question about it, though. How, now, and probably a question for Joanne, for her benefit as well as ours. This got changed. So many things have changed. Joanne can't really even go on the town meeting, on the calendar, excuse me, on the town website, and pull up the E-code. She won't even see the original medical marijuana. It's, it needs that update.
Yeah.
While we're waiting for that update to occur through the Board of Selectmen or however it gets done, do we actually have a copy of up-to-date as of today?
Yes, all the amendments, that's what I compiled last year.
Okay.
All of the amendments that were passed by the town since the last time the E-code was correct.
2011.
Yeah, so everything's been compiled.
Okay.
The building inspector has it, I have copies. I didn't dish those out to you guys.
No.
All right, I'm going to do that then, but I have everything.
So those are the amendments?
Yeah.
That's what will need to be sent to E-code?
Yeah, they do have everything except for what was passed.
Right.
So, you know, we got so late into the season last year, it only made sense knowing that we had so many zoning ordinances to pass this spring, to, you know, let's wait, get it all done.
That's the excuse we use every year.
So...
We use that excuse every single year, because there's always another town meeting.
You know, now typically...
Been hearing it since 2011.
Typically, in a town budget, it's about $1,500, that's a maintenance charge to update your zoning ordinance year in and year out, so that really has to be a consistent line item. Otherwise, you get into the situation that we're in now, that has to be guarded.
Is that something we should put in our budget?
Yes.
Just because that way it's there?
Yeah.
I think we have the money.
You know, the one way we could do it is that at the end of the year, you know, there should be a surplus when all the funds are sent back in.
Sure.
Redistributed, we really should formulate a letter and present it to the board at the next meeting to forward to the Board of Selectmen, recommending that. I mean, it really has to be done. We had a cost estimate in the $5,000 to $6,000 range that would take care of the problem for the previous few years.
Okay.
You know, it might go up a little bit because of all these other ordinances, substantial pages of amendments that have to be incorporated into the zoning ordinance, so, say, another $1,500, so you're talking anywhere from $6,000 to $7,000 that needs to be allocated for that project.
But this, this new marijuana bylaw replaces the medical.
Yeah.
And that would be a substantial amount that would have to come out, so there's no point in them putting that in, only to take it out.
Yeah, so the other thing is too, as long as we send them everything in Word, which we now can do, you know, that reduces the costs, because then they're just cutting and splicing from, you know, our communication into their system.
I think that's a good idea, but I would prefer doing that right off. I mean, this is, this is...
No, it's got to be, it's got to be a priority right now, because nobody can get a copy of what really is up-to-date.
Right.
Right, and I mean...
And they can't even look on the computer, so...
And isn't that public information?
That's right. We can't be distributing it.
And it's hot information, and people, you said that people knocking on the door.
Yeah, yeah. You know, I mean, what happens in planning too, you always have an attorney that's doing research on a subdivision that was approved 20 years ago, and they have to find out what was on the books 20 years ago, so historical data is just as important.
Absolutely.
We say our town code is historic, but not everyone agrees with me.
You know, I mean, say worse came to worst, worst-case scenario, we would have to maintain it in-house, and...
I would say, let's do it.
The last time we did that was with Sarah Buck, and Larry Graham and Sarah Buck went out of sync, and...
That's, that's serious data management.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Do we want to hire somebody to do that? No.
No, 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 it's just general code, they're universal for all the country, they do it for everybody.
Right, right.
How about a motion to get it this moving?
What would you recommend, like, a letter or a letter to the Board of Selectmen?
Well, we could inform them, you know, if they would prefer doing it, we need this, this is imperative.
Cited as a high priority of, you know, work that needs to be done.
We will take it out of our budget if necessary, but this has got to be done.
Yeah.
If you could be, you know, put a strong letter to it.
Yeah.
We can't take a risk like, the town can't take a risk like that.
No, I mean, sooner or later, I mean, some developer's going to come in here with about $40,000 worth of plans, or something that we don't have anymore.
Right.
It's on our website.
Yep.
That little disclaimer...
Can you make a motion so we can make this official?
I would make a motion, I would make a motion that we have John craft a letter to the effect that we want the Board of Selectmen to recognize that this is of the highest priority, and that we're willing to use whatever residual funds we have at the end of the year from our own budget to be dedicated towards ameliorating the cost.
Second?
Is that basically?
Yeah, I got it.
You know.
Yeah.
Okay, we ready for vote?
Absolutely.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, unanimous. Thank you.
All right.
Okay.
Put that one to rest.
Please.
Well, you've done all the work already anyway, so...
Now that we have a program to deliver it in Word...
Anything else about the town meeting? Did you get to talk to Harry about the visual? I saw...
I did, right before this meeting.
Oh, okay.
Powerpoint.
So...
We'll do PowerPoints next time.
Yeah.
You did do, just tell me yes or no, did you do a PowerPoint or not?
We did many, many PowerPoints.
Okay.
I remember Dave Surfish used to say, his kids used to say, "Oh, is that Mr. PowerPoint?" We did them for years and years.
Yeah.
You know, you don't get, you don't get the pushback as much over the last couple of years of doing PowerPoints, but for a while, people were really burnt out on them.
Yeah.
And don't know, no more PowerPoints.
Yeah, yeah.
Now people aren't complaining as much.
When you have a lot of data, charts, maps, things like that, it's helpful.
Well, the maps, I think, is really, really good on the PowerPoint.
What made it difficult for this last town meeting is I was talking to Harry about it, it was just so long, 27 articles, and we would have been there till 1:00 in the morning if we got hung up in presentations, and I think it was pretty much past most of people's bedtime by the time we got out of it.
It was past mine. It was past mine.
All right, so the next thing for discussion is our annual fees.
Now, if you want me to lead off this, start it, this is one of those things, you have to be reading the zoning ordinance to, you know, realize that you have to review your annual fees, you can waive it, you know, that's within the staff report, and that's within the provisions of the zoning. This planning board could waive the review, the annual review if it wanted to. But the intent of this evening is to have that discussion, and if you had a chance to review that particular section of the zoning ordinance, which was attached to the staff report, if you see within or, you know, have any suggestions tonight to tinker with any of those annual, not annual, but fee, fees for subdivisions, site plans, special permits, you know, we can start that discussion. Any formal changing of the numbers requires a publication notice and a public hearing of the planning board. What we do need to do is incorporate, if you've read through the marijuana bylaw, we do have to incorporate a fee structure specific to the uses that will be coming at us, so, what I would suggest in that regard, that we would treat the marijuana permit requirements and costs as we would any other special permit and site plan, so we'll keep it simple. So if we're not going to change any of the fees that are involved, that what we need to do is have a public hearing setting up the marijuana fees, and that they would simply replicate the requirements for a site plan and special permit fees, and that would be one way to take care of this. So it would have to be in...
Either way, we have to have a public hearing to do it.
Yeah, we do.
What about for, would we have to change the fee structure for, or create a fee structure for the mixed-use district now? That's special permit too, right?
That would be still special permit and site plan, and that's all based on square footage.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And we do have the, you know, it does require permitting, special permit by the planning board.
Yeah.
Yeah, so those fees are already taken care of.
That's good enough, okay.
Yeah, I mean, I looked at the fees, and they, you know, they look up-to-date.
They did in 2011, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was a big year.
Brilliant.
And I noticed on that '91 law, or the docks on the Great Falls, there's a permit required there as well.
Yeah.
So that could be added to the fees.
Yeah.
Hopefully we won't get any, but...
Is that a permit or a recommendation?
We do have a dock coming in, believe me.
Is that a permit or a recommendation that we made?
It's a, it's a, it's a recommendation. We're not issuing a permit.
Oh, you're not?
No, somehow, this is the craziest thing, because locally, they still need to get conservation approval.
Right, because it's near the water, sure.
But DEP designated, or DS designated the planning boards, local planning boards, as the reviewing body for the state permit aspects for docks and piers, and that's spelled out. Everybody now has a copy of the page one and two. And that's spelled out, everybody now has a copy of the page one and two.
Yeah, I lost it though, I don't know what happened to it.
I'll send it to you again, but it, you know, in that one letter, two-page letter, it explains the whole process. And then I read through the law and it's conducive to the law. Well, we don't hold a public hearing, it's a quasi, uh, public hearing. No, no notices are sent out on our part, applicant for the dock or pier. That person is assigned the task of publishing, um, in a local paper of circulation. In a timely manner, such as we would have to do, but it's the applicant that has to do that. And, um, then if any letters of concern, um, are involved or submitted to the planning board. We are to read those into the record, um, if anybody shows up, we're to, you know, listen to what their concerns are. And then, uh, if we want to, as a planning board, we could submit comments to the state or not. And if forty-five days passes without them receiving comments, then it's considered, you know, no objection.
Are we supposed to be into the construction of it? We just to look at it?
I think we're the flag.
What do we look for?
I think we're the flag.
We're, we're just the local, they, they don't wanna have to do it, so they assign us to do it.
I got that.
But then the Conservation Commission still has to do their thing, because they have jurisdiction over.
Well, there's, there's pages and pages on the computer, you know.
I don't know why they wanted to double up on the local effort. You know, get two boards involved when, you know, you do have.
Get it off their, get it off their plate.
But you do have a water-oriented expert body that reviews things.
Well, the gist of it, what I could, and I could be all wrong, but what I could get out of it, which, like I said, is like fifteen pages. Is that on the Great Pond, it, it can't be, uh, any more than six hundred square feet. And the intent is to prevent any other boats from interfering with it. Or, I should say it the other way, the docks shouldn't interfere with any of the boats navigating the boats. So that's, that's about all I could, and then I thought, well, are we to see if it's structurally sound? Do we need an engineering? Anything like that?
I mean, the, the plans, as you read, they can be sketch plans, you know, they can't, these docks, piers can't be greater than six hundred square feet.
Oh, that, that was, uh.
Interesting, interesting.
Yeah, that was, that was what I was, uh, concerned with.
Uh, we'll have our first example, um, our next meeting. I already wrote the staff report for it, and what happened was he didn't advertise. In a timely manner, so we had, and then he was gonna be on vacation, um, tonight, so we put it off till the thirteen.
He just has to advertise, he doesn't need to send letters to a butters and all that?
Um, that's, I think that's part of the process too. They, or they pick up notice by reading the local paper.
When does that forty-five day clock start?
That, the forty-five days.
We hold a public meeting?
Yes. It's either that or it's in receipt of. The application, because we do have to move on it.
When do we get it?
You know, I, I heard it all out, the staff report already includes it, but I didn't, um, read and prepare it for tonight.
That doesn't sound right, because, uh, we can receive it, and they could just drag their feet on the notice, notification for forty days. Are you done? Kinda crazy.
Well, we should, we really, uh, just like, just like the twenty-one, we shouldn't really stamp it as the planning board received it. Until we have a meeting.
The other thing, it would really have been nice for them to, you know, offer, you know. Opportunity to comment on this, or let us know what they were doing, and we could have offered comment and probably straighten this out.
Then we might have complained.
But how did it end up with the plan, uh, with the planning board to decide on something like this? The only rational sense, it would be the Conservation Commission.
Exactly, the only thing I could think of would be the construction. That's, that's our thing.
Yeah, but we don't, we would not oversee construction or something like that, that would be the building department.
Exactly, but we would need to see the, some kind of plans he's gonna come in with, right?
Yeah, but you, you saw the letter, they only have to hand draw, they, this does not involve, because these are small structures. This does not involve somebody having to hire an engineer, structural engineer to design this. You, the property owner, can do this all by yourself, designing it on a napkin, that's what it, that's what it calls for.
Oh, wow.
This is, this, this is an oddball thing that, you know, basically, uh, came down from on high. That was his responsibility.
In twenty, twenty years ago. In twenty years ago, anybody had owned property on a pond could put up a dock, you know, it was just a thing. You know, you know what docks do besides giving people, uh, you know, a comfortable way to get into their boat? Um, they're great areas for bass to hang out, if you ever go bass fishing, that's where you catch them is underneath the dock. So they're great habitat for, um, the, um.
Yeah, fish.
Fish, you know, so. You know, other than people falling off them or whatever, it's not really.
Got a splinter.
Yeah, there's not much government involvement that should be really involved with something like this. We're, we're beyond that scope of.
I'm sure it'll be taxed, right?
There we go.
We have to know what's out there.
Not, not to go totally retrograde on what we were talking about, but, uh, just to roll back to the fees. So, uh, we, we need to actually have a hearing for the fee structure.
For any change?
Yeah, yeah, for any changes, and the, and the one change we definitely have to incorporate is the marijuana issue. And that's just to, um, specify, as, as it's specified in the bylaw. We have to create a fee structure specific to.
I'll, I'll, I'll make a motion to authorize, uh, the town planner to, um. Publish a public hearing notice for, um, review of the fees. For annual, regulation, annual review of the fee regulations.
Any second?
My second.
All favor?
That was easy.
Yes.
Will the public come to the meeting?
Sure, everything is public here.
They do sometimes, they, they don't.
There may be people watching TV.
Yeah, they'll be coming to make sure that we don't go too high. Or get too high with, with the fees. God, there's too many puns with that whole issue.
Really, it's a slippery slope.
And you know, all this work might go up in smoke.
We'll hash that out later.
We're not gonna let it.
On another note, Healthy Farms is open, is my understanding.
I heard.
Yep.
Back in business.
Are, are we gonna?
And we get three, three percent, right? Go Healthy Farms?
They're not sure where that money goes.
We personally.
No, but it's in quotes with the, um, provisions of the law.
The host agreement.
Acquire the funds. In, in, in quotes with the host agreement.
The host agreement.
But the host agreement has an amendment still for the grandfathering the existing one.
I don't know.
Therefore.
Maybe it'll pass, maybe it won't, I don't know.
Logical that if you needed amendment to correct where the money is going. Then in that bill, it tells you exactly where it goes for the expense of marijuana to the town.
Or it was vague.
There's some accounting.
Absolutely, DLR needs their, must get their fingers on it.
Absolutely.
Are, are we going to do, um, um, what is it, member or public concern?
Sure, that's next.
Okay.
Okay, member of, uh, what is your concern?
Two years ago, uh, we, well, we remember we were talking about the MS four. And part of the, one of the very first MS fours was an initiative. Where, uh, towns were asked to adopt erosion control bylaws. Uh, we did so, um, uh, two years ago, John, before you came. The bylaw that we had adopted, uh, spoke and gave authority to the permitting board. For that, to, uh, promulgate regulations. The CONCOM was the one that handled all those, they never did come up with any regulations after about nine years. So, um, we went to town meeting and we had, uh, the permitting authority be changed to our board. That was about two years ago, I think it was twenty sixteen, I'm sure you saw that in the amendments he had anyway, that's right there. And, um, but now, it seems like, um, it's one of those things where it's not a very sexy topic. And it seems to always take a backseat to everything else, but we need to promulgate regulations. I mean, I'm not talking about a three-hundred-page document, but there need to be regulations that go with that bylaw. Because that bylaw calls for us to promulgate regulations, and. It's not too crazy right now, it's summertime. Uh, I, I, I'd like to make a motion that, um, we authorize the town planner to, um. Uh, post, uh, make notice for, um, in, in a newspaper or general circulation to hold a hearing. For, um, regulations for chapter fifty-seven.
That's right.
Chapter fifty-seven erosion control bylaw.
A second?
On, do we want to do any review before a public hearing?
Can we?
Do it right in the public hearing.
Cool.
Transparency.
Yeah, there's probably some great examples that.
Yeah, if I, I'll look for.
They were sent to your predecessor's predecessor.
Right.
Nick.
And, and the CONCOM, at that time, I even sent it to the CONCOM before we got the bylaw changed. It, it's pretty much, it's very similar to the wetland protection.
Again, though.
Details of it, that's all.
But again, nobody today would be excavating, um, without doing the erosion control. It'd be really foolhardy to try to pull that off, and, and everybody, you have to do it. And our field engineers, um, are tasked with making sure. If you have a pile of excavated soils just sitting out there, and you don't have the silt fence around them, or the hay bills. You know, what the appropriate erosion control measure is. You know, somebody shows up from EPA or DEP, you know.
We had the problem with one of the developers.
How, how many years ago was that?
Not that long ago, you, you had the map up there, right in that area, Railroad Ave.
The, the bottom line is, most of the time, CONCOM handles that, because it's near a wetland, you can't find, uh, too many parcels in this town that don't have a wetland. But every now and then, there is a parcel that isn't a subject to a subdivision or site plan or CONCOM.
A lot of times, you, you know, it's not so much the developer, it's the subsequent homeowners, you know. You know, Railroad Ave is a great example, is a big drainage structure out there, head wall. And it seems like it collects a lot of, um, grass clippings and yard waste.
Absolutely.
You know, before you know it, you know, the drainage channel's filled in, and, and the water backs up and disperses where it's not supposed to be going.
Well, that area had a twenty-one E, because that used to be repairing buses, school buses. So there was piles of different kinds of sand and gravel.
The biggest violators of this stuff are beavers.
Beavers, yeah.
They never ask for a permit.
Big ponds were not supposed to be.
Well, the, the developer had piles, and, and he didn't cover them correctly. And, uh, we had a terrific rain that weekend, and the neighbors were upset down the street. To West Main Street, I guess all in that little area, uh, Middle Street, is it those little streets? It was washing right down into their yards, into the street. It was a total mess, a weekend.
Our chairman has been working diligently over the last couple of months with the situation, um, in working with the building inspector. Straightening out a, a driveway construction project that was spewing, um, siltation all over the place.
That would have been captured by this. Yes, so with, with that.
Do we get a second, do we get a vote here?
Pop, pop second it, right? So this is to have the public hearing for the, um, chapter fifty-seven regulations?
Right.
Uh, and can I just say that, that is when you're ready for it, John?
Yeah.
That's how I intended it.
Yeah.
When you're ready, when, when you have what you need and you're ready to pull the trigger.
Yeah, um, one thing I'm working on now that has a July twelfth deadline is that, um, Grant. PA RC, the one you turned me on to, and I went to the workshop.
Cool. Cool.
So that has to be done.
Great. When you're ready, uh, just, just loading the, loading the gun.
Made the mistake of driving into Boston, you know, an hour and twenty minutes later, I came out of the meeting, thirty-two dollars.
Welcome, welcome.
Take the train.
Cambridge forty-two every day.
So, do we have a vote?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Unanimous?
Unanimous. Have you any other suggestions? Discussions?
Just that, um, when, when.
Bob?
Love to see a.
I have two.
See those, or chapter one sixty-five and chapter three sixty-five.
Yeah, that would be great.
That would be very nice to have, um, you know, fresh, fresh copies of that. What date on that?
Yeah, I have two office.
Two thousand eleven?
Two thousand eleven.
Our chairman had mentioned that he was doing the planners' evaluations, did, did he do that?
Wh- who was this?
Rob, he was going to, he mentioned it and walked out, so I don't know anymore about it.
Yeah, that was, say, two or three meetings ago. Yeah.
Did he do it?
I, I haven't talked to him about it.
Okay, well, are we going to get, uh, the rest of the members are gonna get it?
I hope so.
Sheets?
Yeah.
Yeah, give us the blank sheets, yeah, and then we, we do it. So you've never had a three-month evaluation? That's usually the process, okay. We'll get.
Okay, we'll make it a six-month, okay, we'll make it a year, uh, okay, eighteen months.
I made it this far.
And then my other question is, what was, what was also mentioned was the assistant now is full-time. Did, did a job description get corrected?
Yes, it did.
Can we see that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I, uh, beefed that up and.
Great.
Making sure that person is, um, busy, busy.
Wonderful. So that's my two things. Anything else? We ready to pack it up?
I move, we adjourn.
I second, you adjourn.
Me, you adjourn.
Did we welcome?